All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. And we're gonna start out with our approval of our consent agenda. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes of our 315, 2022 regular city council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Were there any questions, corrections, comments regarding those minutes? Did you receive copies of the vouchers totaling $281,319.46? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Also in our consent agenda is a purchase order for Middle Creek Mining for South Ash Culvert. $18,900. Did you all receive a copy of that? Okay, any questions regarding the appeal for Middle Creek Mining? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That takes us to our first public comment opportunity. We do have some members of the public, but I think most of the people in the room are on the agenda. In other areas, is there anybody online that would like to comment?
Rod or Karen, it looks like we have two.
If you'd like to comment, just unmute and identify yourself and make your comment.
Hi, I'm Karen Freyhofer and I live at 210 Elm Street. I had talked with the city administrator about trying to change that to South Elm. My disability payments, the US government, when it's not designated a north or a south, it automatically defers to a north. And so it's kind of messing things up. So I don't know. I talked to the post office and they said that the city council deals with addresses.
Yeah, the city does assign the addresses to it, but I hadn't followed up on this and the post master, well, the postmaster, I guess Kathy, had indicated that they had got this corrected. So is it still happening, Karen?
Well, when I type my address in, it just depends. Sometimes it comes out South Elm, sometimes it comes out like the last time I asked the post office, they didn't know. They said that nothing had been changed in their system. So if anything has happened since then, then I think that was maybe a week or so ago.
Follow up on that again.
Okay, Grand is the delineator of north and south, correct?
Yeah.
And if the street doesn't go north of Grand, is it not identified?
It doesn't usually get identified. The issue is that we have identified Elm Street twice in the system. And so the house is on the north side. There's only about a block and a half that's Elm Street. And so that's where the confusion has been with the post office. They indicated that they had fixed this issue, but evidently not if Karen's still having an issue with it. Yeah, the alternative would be to change all the addresses on those streets, which gets a little bit messy. But we can figure out some solution here.
Well, if you'd please look into it and report back at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate you being online today. Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move into our next item on the agenda. And we have a guest. We have Tracy Lo from the Marion County Core Community. And she's going to talk to us about Core and their activities and the things that they do to help people in Marion County.
Thank you. How is everybody today? I came here about a year ago. I think some of you were still here. I was brand new to Core at the time. And it's a year later and I'm now the director of Core in Marion County. So I know a lot more about it than when I came in the first time. So is there anybody here who doesn't know who Core Community is? And did you know about Circles?
I don't think so.
Circles in Marion County, because we replace Circles. What we are, we're a program in Marion County, working to end poverty in Marion County. We also work in 14 other counties in Kansas and we're expanding every day. So we meet, our class meets here in Hillsborough on Thursday nights over here at Trinity Menonah Church. But we do serve the entire county. I did bring some brochures for everyone and in here is some specific information on poverty in Marion County. And on the back, you can find all of my contact information. But what we're looking for right now, because we're looking for some things, we're looking for some families that need Core Community. And people who are living in poverty are faced with a lot of shame. When we're walking around looking for these families, they're not raising their hand and saying, ooh, me, me, me. Because, you know, our population as a whole puts a lot of shame on people in poverty. So they're hard for us to find. And so we reach out to the community, churches, businesses, individual people to say, do you know a family that's having a hard time? Struggling to pay their bills, struggling to keep their house in good repair, struggling to buy food for their family. Because if you know those families, we can help them. And we ask that you contact one of us and try to try to help us set up a meeting with the families so we can talk to them about our program. So why is Core Community important to people who aren't in poverty? It's important to all of us because as we in poverty in our community, we improve the quality of the community for everyone. We improve tax revenue. We have people getting gainful and better employment. We have families buying homes that weren't buying homes before and contributing to their communities in ways that they were never able to before. So it creates a lot of good for the community as a whole. In Marion County, I know with COVID, everybody's receiving free lunch at school. But without COVID, 41.5% of our kids in Marion County were receiving free and reduced lunch. That's a lot of kids. We have a 10.9% poverty rate in Marion County, Kansas. 10%, so that's one in 10 families. I mean, someone you know is in poverty. And 13.4% of those families are below the 100% level of poverty. So they're like in super poverty. So when people come to our program, we start with, we have our first class, which we call Getting Ahead. It's a 20-week class, which is kind of an introduction for them. And we touch very lightly on a number of subjects over a 20-week period. And when they graduate from Getting Ahead, they move into what we call our Phase Two programming. Families can stay in Phase Two with us anywhere from a year to 10 years if they want. But we do find that, I mean, we don't ever kick them out. In fact, some of them are going to work for us out of poverty. But our research shows it takes three to five years to walk a family out of poverty. It doesn't happen overnight. It's a slow and messy, messy thing. Our budget here in Marion County to keep this project going is $54,000 a year. And all of that comes from donations and grant money. So if you haven't had me knocking on your door looking for a donation, you probably eventually will one day. If you don't want to make me knock, again, my contact information is in here. We are a nonprofit, so any donations made to us are fully tax deductible. So what else am I looking for? I'm looking for volunteers. Looking for people to come make a meal. We serve a meal every Thursday night to the whole family. And we provide them with free childcare while their parents go to class. In Phase Two Program, we do work on budgeting. We do a class called Job Lingo, learn how to write a resume, do an interview. And numerous, numerous other topics. The other thing that people don't always know or realize is in our Phase Two class, those are open to the entire community. You don't have to be in poverty or part of our program to attend them. So if we're posting on our Facebook page about some topic coming up and that's interesting to you or someone in your family, all you gotta do is give us a call and say, hey, I want to come to that class. And come down, join us for dinner and go to that class, whether it's one week, 12 weeks, however long it is. So that benefits the whole community as well. Anybody have any questions about Core Community?
I think Phyllis. Phyllis raised your hand. Phyllis, do you have a question? Maybe? Can't hear you, Phyllis, if you're on. Yeah. Not getting anything from it.
I think we have people online that won't be getting one of these tonight. Would it be all right if I just told them what my phone number is?
Sure.
So if you're not gonna pick up a brochure and you want to call me, my phone number is 720-971-7133. My email is tracy, T-R-A-C-Y-K dot MarionCore at gmail dot com. And can I just leave you some?
Please, yeah, please.
Does anybody else have any questions they want to ask?
Do you connect with the schools and with the?
We do connect with the schools. We do a lot of work with the schools. I've been working on forming a partnership with all the schools here in Hillsborough and Marion County, both parents and parents and parents as teachers, ACT, and Main Street Ministries here in Hillsborough. Because what I find is our schools, they know who these families are too. Just as our churches do, and just as people in our neighborhoods do. They know who they are. And, you know, they're leery of us. They're like, I don't know what these people want from us. All we want is to help them have a better life. Help Marion County be stronger, stronger.
Something that I found interesting at our meeting last week, which is their community assessment. And I've been privileged to attend that the last two years. When they do a kind of an assessment of what's available, what services are available or not available in our communities. And so Tracy invites governmental and other constituencies to that meeting to talk about those things. But one of the things that I learned is what is the number in terms of income for a family of four, family with four children? What's the number they need to be making annually to be considered out of?
So what we consider out of poverty is their income level is 200% above the poverty level. Okay, so for a family of four, that's $54,000 a year. And that's nationwide. So here in Marion County, $54,000 a year still can be fairly tight for a family of four. But it is a livable amount. I moved here from Denver two years ago. At $54,000, you would still be impoverished in Denver, Colorado, and many other places in our country. And that, like I said, that's a federal poverty level, so that's everywhere. We talked about too, because somebody brought up at that assessment, well, how many jobs in Marion County pay $54,000 a year? Not a lot of them. But if you have two wage earners in your family, you know, you can probably have two wage earners, maybe someone earns $30,000 a year and someone earns $25,000 a year. And then that family of four is now at 200% above the poverty level. We've had families come into our program that are earning $7,000 or $8,000 a year and trying to live with a family of two to four people.
So if you have both parents working, what's the next thing that they need?
Well, the next thing that they need is childcare. And I think everybody here knows childcare is an issue, not only in Hillsborough, but in all of Marion County. Just as housing is an issue here in Hillsborough and all of Marion County, especially low-income housing. But even if you're not low-income, again, I moved here two years ago. We had a heck of a time finding a house to buy. And we did end up finding exactly what we were looking for, but it was a blessing that that happened because there was nothing. I know periodically there's nothing on the market in Marion County. And so then if you can't afford to buy a home, you're looking to rent, well, guess what? Most homes in Marion County are owner occupied. And the ones that are rentals are rented because there's not enough of them. So these families, you know, often are facing homelessness or two or three or four families are packed into a little house trying to keep shelter for their families. Keep food on the table. Our food banks are very busy here in Marion County. I volunteer at two of them every month. It's an amazing amount of people that come through there every time.
We don't always like to look for it or think about it, but it's right here. Those problems are not somewhere else. They're not in the inner city.
There's a couple of success stories. I'm telling you, let me tell you a little bit of the success for Core Communities. I have a family in my program. You didn't meet her because she wasn't there the other night, but she attended a training in Hutchinson with me today, a Core Community training. She's been with the program for three years. She came in homeless with four children. And two years ago, she bought a house in Durham. So she's a homeowner. She is still under 200% of the poverty level, so we can't actually consider her out of poverty. But she's not homeless. She owns a home. She's able to feed her kids. And she actually applied for a job in Core Community because that's another thing we've branched jobs. And as we grow, we have more opportunities for jobs too. We're gonna, our plan that we learned today, we're gonna add 20 more communities over the next four years. And we even have interest. We have one Core Community in Illinois right now. We have interest now for the Core Community outside of Milwaukee. So we're expanding nationwide. We are the most successful poverty program in the United States. And we're not looking to ban it on poverty. We're looking to solve poverty. So we're doing a lot of hard, messy work. These families are messy. And it's hard work and it's frustrating. It's hard for them. It's hard for us. And when they stick with us though, magic happens. We have another family out of Augusta, Core Community in Augusta. This family is at 250% poverty level now with income. They're still part of our program. And this leader was, just took a, I'm sorry, just took a position on the Executive Board for Youth Core Ministries, which is our parent organization. So she's now on the executive board of this nonprofit organization, which is a paid position. So, you know, success is happening and it's happening all the time. Right here under the nose. And like I said, we meet right here in Hillsborough. We do serve Pueblo County. Transportation is another problem we have because this is a big county. And I know that because I live as far away from Hillsborough as you can and still live in Marion County. It takes me 45 minutes to drive from my house to here. Which is why if you were here when I came in, I said, I didn't even go home. I stopped and had dinner because I came in from Hutch. And if I'd have gone home, I'd have gone home just to turn around and come back. So I hung out. I hung out here tonight. But it's a big county and people in poverty don't always have transportation or good transportation. So we're looking at, how can we get them into our program if they live in Burns or Florence? Or Durham or Lehigh? Because, you know, again, these places aren't real far if you have a car, but what if you don't? You know, if you live 45 minutes from here and you don't have a car, it might as well be the other side of the world. We do have a church here in Hillsborough that's talking to us about allowing us to use their van for transportation to help get people to our program. If we do move forward with that, that'll create yet another employment opportunity here in Hillsborough because we'll have to hire so much. It'll only be a part-time job. But, you know, if it supplements someone's income or maybe a retired person that just needs a little help with money, it's a great opportunity. Anyway, think about, think about Core Community. We meet Thursday nights, 5:30 at Trinity Menonah Church. And anyone is welcome to join us to come in, have a meal with us, come check out our program, meet our families, meet your staff. Get to know us a little bit. I need volunteers. We have a class graduating here, Getting Ahead class is gonna graduate in two weeks. And we need what we call Core Friends for them. And what a Core Friend is, is a middle-class person from the community that's gonna form an intentional friendship with them. And we have training and how to do that. We don't expect you to solve their problems. We don't expect you to pay their bills. What we ask you to do is become an intentional friend to help bridge that gap between poverty and middle class. Because imagine, if you will, that you want to have a billion-dollar powerball and now you are among the very wealthy. Do we know how to behave in that class? We have no idea. We would feel very awkward now to place at those kind of events and galas and we just wouldn't know how to function there. People coming out of poverty want to be in the middle class. They don't know how to function here. We speak a different language. We have different rules. We dress differently. We talk differently. And part of our program is forming these intentional friendships to help bridge that gap. Because if you're just hanging out with somebody, get to know them, you also get to know their family, their friends. You do things together once in a while. It helps you start to blend into another level of life. I desperately need more friends. So I don't know if anybody in here wants to ever talk about that, but please call me if you do. It's, I ask for a minimum commitment of 18 months that you come to our program one time a month. One Thursday a month for 18 months. We do not require you to interact with that family or that person outside of the meetings, but we encourage it. So, you know, if you wanted to just call or text with your friend or have them over for dinner or go hunt and fish and whatever you like to do with them, that's encouraged but not required. But we do have Core Friend Night, the first Thursday of every month, and that's what we ask our friends to attend. Any other questions?
It's important work and we're glad you're doing it. Thank you, Tracy.
Oh, the other thing too is these meals that we serve every Thursday, those are donated to us sometimes by an organization like a city council. Many churches do these meals for us. Sometimes families do, other businesses do, the Lions Club sometimes does. And so if anybody wants to, you know, get together with a group or an individual and donate a meal to us, we'd love to have that as well. All right, well, thank you for your time and unless anybody else has any questions, I'm gonna make my long trek home because I've been out of the house for about 13 hours at this point. But I appreciate your time and I really hope that I hear from some of you and I know we'll talk some more. And I hope to have some support from Hillsborough here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy.
And I'll leave those extra flyers.
Okay, next item up on the agenda, we have some other guests tonight. And we have Commissioners Kent Becker, Jonah Garing, and our county engineer Bryce Gold. And I understand you would like to, they would like to address the council.
Depending on Bryce.
Step up to the podium.
I believe we're bringing up that bone told again.
There you go.
Well, that's kind of a tough act to follow, following Tracy here, very nice program. She does bring up the issues of, it's ironic, she brings up transportation, you know, trying to get from, she's got a 45-minute drive and it's a big county. It takes a lot of means. It takes me an hour if I drive from corner to corner. And it's just, it's amazing. But what I want to talk to you about tonight is the cost share program that we have worked in with KDOT. KDOT has many, many programs that allow us to access state and federal money for projects. So what we do is we try to find a project in the several hundred thousand to several million dollar range and apply for some sort of a cost share. We also have bridge programs and things like that. But what I would like to talk to you tonight is the cost share that we have submitted for Indigo Road, which will basically be at the Co-op Flat Storage Building. That's Kansha. What we're looking to do is rebuild about two tenths of a mile north. Let's say something.
You said Indigo and then?
I'm sorry, Kansha.
We got all those.
Yes, yes. But, yeah. Sorry about that. But anyway, it's Kansha. I'm sorry. We want to reconstruct about two tenths of a mile north of that intersection and then south about 1.8 miles to south of the fertilizer plant. That area is in tremendous distress due to the amount of trucks and the heavy trucks going through there. And so we've been trying to figure out what we can do to fix that. Well, we've also been trying several other roads and we've been successful on some, but anyway. This fits the program that they're looking at now quite nicely. With that stretch of road, obviously, the first half mile south of 56th on the east side of the road plus, yes, the other east, west side of the road, is actually city property. So we've submitted this project basically for the county's purposes, but I guess what we're asking is for the city of Hillsborough to offer support, not only from the public relation size, but also in the financial aspect. We realize that you guys face the same issues that we do as far as money. But we also want to make sure that you guys are behind us on this, for this. We, this project is also unique in the fact is that due to the heavy truck traffic, it's actually a very, very good candidate for concrete pavement instead of the asphalt pavement. And that's also very beneficial because right now with the price of fuel, asphalt's the same way. Asphalt cement has doubled in the last several months. And so the price of the hot-mix asphalt is too low. So it helps us immensely if we go back with concrete pavement. Your lifecycle costs will probably end up being the 20 to 30 year range, compared to asphalt in the 10 to 15. So anyway, the project we submitted with the latest cost estimates was about two and a half million. And so, again, with the financial situation that everybody has, I guess we're just asking for what you guys could do to help. Because obviously the city does get the benefit of that first half mile on the west side. Again, this is just a project we have. We have not heard back from KDOT. But they have a million-dollar maximum out of it. So the county or the other parts other than the KDOT maximum would be 1.5 million. Now, there may be some other costs on top of that because we're responsible for design and inspection costs. But I can handle most of those through my office with maybe a little bit of consulting work, whatever, real surveying and things like that. So like I said, that's kind of a big issue. But again, we look at the amount of traffic that goes in and out of there for both of those. And obviously, we need to do something with that pavement. So I guess I go with that. I will tell you, we've talked about since I brought up Indigo, we're also looking to overlay Indigo south of Hillsborough with the condition that in the last two months, it's probably gone up over a quarter million dollars just for us to do that. Assuming that we can get it done yet this year. That's the other thing we're facing is talking to contractors is they can't even do it this year. They're actually bidding projects this year to have liquidated damages in it for next year to be completed. They're facing the same issues as anybody else trying to find labor. Even local contractors are facing that, let alone the ones that travel for a living. So we're facing that issue on Indigo as well. We're looking at other alternatives just to try to hold it together until we can come up with something else because it's in pretty rough shape. That Indigo Road is the highest road we have for traffic. It runs about 1,500 vehicles a day, depending on where you are, especially down to the 150th or the 120th that goes over to Gosse. That's a huge commuter way both ways. So anyway, we're working on that. So like I said, that's what we're looking at now is if we want a contract, we may or may not get it done this year. But we're really looking to do something this year because we'll have to go back and do some extensive patching. So I sent this cost share thing to Matt, so I don't know whether you submitted it to the council members or whatever else.
No, I never got any.
You never got it?
I never got anything from you. We had a conversation on the phone, but I've never gotten any.
Okay, I will follow up that because I know I sent it to you. It must be through an email or somewhere. We can definitely get it to you. With communication, that's like everything. But anyway, the other thing is I'm always available to answer any questions or if you have any thoughts or whatever else. And I'm always available to visit with the local municipalities, whatever else, and people out in the field as well. So what I guess, kind of what we're looking to do is on this project is, the other thing was, if we go with concrete, it's actually beneficial to us as well because we can actually do the project later in the year and earlier next year if that's the case. Asphalt plants typically shut down November 1st or November 15th. They typically don't start back up till April. We can produce concrete all through the winter time. You just have to use a special consideration not to let it freeze as well as the base and things like that. We can produce concrete all through the winter time, you just have to use a special consideration not to let it freeze as well as the base and things like that. Uh, Marion County, we're looking to supply the, the base material as well. Um, so we have, we have a lot of things we can do cost cutting. Um, but like I said, that's concrete. I have talked with those, the uh, Ag Service as well as the Co-op. Uh, they're behind a hundred and ten percent um, to whatever they can to help out as well, so. Anyway, any questions about Kansas, Indigo, anything else, refer to the two commissioners, I'll just I'm definitely uh, available if you have any questions now or in the future, so.
Any questions for Mr. Gold from the council?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I might just add, we are looking over the next couple of years of, of some major improvements that will impact Hillsborough immensely. When you look, when you look at Indigo and the traffic flow out, out of Hillsborough. And then in the, with the Ag community out here on Kansas. So uh, you know, we're, we're probably looking at bonding a project so we can get it done.
We're also touching on a little bit, we've discussed one ninetieth out towards, to Kansas, out to Marion. So um, that, trying to preserve that one, maybe with a cost effective method. So there's a lot of, a lot of places that the county is looking at. Getting right up close to Hillsborough and making some much needed repairs.
How many miles of county road are there?
Too many.
Yeah, I, I know that.
But we, we, uh, we have about a hundred and eighty miles of asphalt. We have eight hundred miles of rock and we have six hundred miles of dirt. So total almost sixteen hundred miles. So um And that, that depends on where it's at because the most important road is the one that goes right from somebody's house.
Well, sure. Yeah, we play that game too.
So, based on our county population, everybody's got a little over a mile to take care of. Each person, man, woman, child.
So.
That's why we want to make our, our communities as attractive as we can so we can get more inflow.
Well, yeah, we understand that, you know.
I, I would also like to say that uh, working with Dale over here has been very, very good. Uh, we've contacted each other numerous times, so I do appreciate that we have that communication. I want to try to work with, with everybody so. Both ways.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, speaking of Mr. Dahlke, um, next item up is uh, Department Head Annual Report. And we have Mr. Dale Dahlke, our Street Superintendent.
I guess you guys got my uh, report already. I didn't know if Matt sent it out or not. Um, so I was planning on pretty much reading what I had wrote down and I guess that's what I'll do, but feel free to ask questions in the middle or at the end or however you feel. I don't have a PowerPoint, I was gonna do that, but my computer doesn't have that program and my kids were busy recently. So, they weren't able to help. Um, so I'm Dale Dahlke and I'm the City um, Street Department Superintendent. Started in May of two thousand and seven. Um, felt like when I started, I didn't have really a predecessor to follow, John Hunter, been retired for a few years. Martin Rhodes had more of a building maintenance crew than a street department. Um, that's just kind of his nature, but so I like the idea of coming into a blank slate. Um, I mean, literally I showed up for work and there was a couple of guys in the department and I was like, what do you guys normally do, you know, and they kind of had to show me a little bit of what they did, which was a lot of building maintenance. So we, we got off to a good start and uh, things have come a long ways, um, I feel. I don't want to say I do everything right because I don't, but uh, um, there's a lot of, a lot of improvements that have happened. But there's a lot of maintenance to keep up with the deterioration development and other needed improvements. A very good crew right now, talented guys to work with at the Street Department, Matt Hine of eight years, Darren Lee Thad four years, and Jesse Dirks of one year. Uh, these guys can do anything that's asked of them. Um, they work diligently and safely, um, currently looking to hire someone, but as you all know, that's hard to do nowadays. Um, well, over the years, whenever I've been looking to hire someone, I've had many people say to me that it should be easy to hire someone because all I need is a warm body and someone to fill the seat. Um, I believe what we do is a street department. Seen a lot of retirement within the city staff, frankly, that'd be kind of scary. Um, I really feel like we've come through that transition very well and we've gained some talented people through this. And we have a lot to be thankful for in that regard. I'm not, not really so much with my department, we didn't have retirement, but just as a city as a whole, and we've come through that well. Um, some of the tax tasks, we're responsible for our street repair, obviously. Allegrating sidewalk repair replacement, managing the city burn site. Uh, this, managing the city compost facility, Boeing City Property and how we fit six right away. Airport runway and building maintenance, sweeping streets, snow and ice removal, setting up election voting booths, trimming trees in the alleys. Maintaining drainage systems, building and equipment maintenance, park maintenance. And we assist every department there is in some way, especially during emergency repairs. And we also cover the trash truck. Um, in David Lockwood's absence, we'll run a second truck during holidays and other needed times. Uh, we haven't been able to reconstruct an entire block length of city streets um, by ourselves, but we've um, talked about doing that in the future, having a, a, you know, a major project just with our city crew. And we haven't quite picked out how we're gonna do that or where we're gonna do that, but I see that coming around the corner at some point. We have been able to repair our streets with concrete replacement, patching and some other curb replacement. Really recently bought a rotary curb machine to assist us to pour in longer stretches of curb. We poured a few block lengths of sidewalks to replace the broken and narrow ones. Um, with asphalt streets, I struggle with uh, some of those in town. It seems like when we go to patch asphalt streets, our motto is, we know where to start, but we don't know where to stop. Um, I mean, that's literally almost every occasion because you just don't know where the end is. Um, the question seems to be, how much money do we invest in a bad street? You know, the street should really be removed or replaced, but we end up patching it um, for a while hopefully. I like to say, keep the good roads good, which means a street can become too far gone and it shouldn't have any more money thrown in at it. But we end up patching it to make it good enough uh, rather than just rebuilding it right away, and it boils down to money. That's just how things are. Uh, we use, the last two summers we spent um, several weeks digging out soft spots up to a foot deep, sometimes even a little bit more in the roads around town, twenty to eighty feet long, and then filling it back up with compacted crushed concrete. Topping it up with hot or cold mixed asphalt. Um, we've done this, we seem to fix the problem, but wherever we stopped, now it's getting soft and broken up. One I just saw the other day was uh, D and Wilson, just south of D on Wilson on the west side of the road. It's just, uh, I don't know, big old blown out spot in the street now, on the, near the edge of the street from the trash truck. And I'm not.
There's some Dahlkes living there, right?
Yeah, wondering around the right next door. And you know, I mean, I'm not blaming the trash truck even though he did that, but um, it's just, it's just the way it is.
Big heavy truck.
Right, I mean, um, I kind of explained that in here, but the, the trash truck is heavier, especially on the front end, and he does a lot of turning and abruptly stopping. And he drives down the edge of the road, which is typically softer than the center of the road. Um, it's just the nature of, of how it works with the trash truck. So, in our old streets, there was really no basin to the asphalt, they just crowned up in dirt. Uh, the topsoil or clay or whatever it was, put asphalt on it, and once the moisture gets under it, it's done. Um, the, the clay can swell up, get soft, and, and that's it, really. Uh, we need to be chip sealing them, and we do occasionally. Um, any given asphalt street should be chip sealed about every six years, sometimes do it every three to five. Uh, some of our asphalt streets haven't been chip sealed for twelve years. Um, twenty twenty is the last time we chip sealed, we had a large project to overlay and chip seal some of the streets, and that project went really well. It kind of built up the crown and then we, we chip sealed them right away to seal the new asphalt. Um, we did not chip seal last summer and I don't plan on chip sealing this summer, we looked into it, but um, sometimes we like to have a little bit bigger project than just smaller projects each year because you have mobile, mobile costs for the contractor, and so sometimes we will hold back a couple of years and then chip seal in one year rather than every year, but so um, special highway monies we usually use for chip sealing. Um, frankly, that doesn't go as far as what we need to. Um, I hope as a city, we can chip in some of our own matching dollars to get um, chip sealing done in a suitable chip seal rotation. Um, we've made large strides in the last ten years with some of the old asphalt streets being replaced with concrete streets which require less maintenance, concrete has a lot larger investment initially, but less maintenance and longer life expectancy. I get quite, quite a few compliments from visitors that say we have nice streets, and that says a lot. We have identified a few streets of immediate need of replacement, I hope we can get those taken care of soon. Our town has many blocks of sidewalks that are broken and have trip hazards. I would like to see sidewalk improvements on the, partially on the homeowner's behalf by encouragement to participate in our cost share sidewalk program. Um, some people take advantage of that, but a lot of people don't know about it, we need to maybe publicize that a little bit. Um, we replace some sidewalks um, as a city, um, sometimes also. One thing that has made our community better is by what we do is started uh, accepting concrete rubble. If you're not part of construction world, you may not notice this. I've always had construction contractors contacting me and asking where they can get rid of broken concrete or what they're doing in town. So we started accepting and stockpiling concrete rubble. Um, this has benefited us in that we have a close place to dump our own concrete that when we remove concrete from our own projects and utility repairs, a tremendous amount of money is saved by homeowners and business owners be, having a local place to get rid of material rather than having it out of town. Once we have enough concrete stockpiled, we crush it into a product that we can use for base material under a new street or use for alley rock. Uh, with fuel prices, this saves us a lot of money um, for untrucking rather than hauling rock in from far away, um, that's right here in town already. Uh, we're currently also selling this rock um, to offset a bit of the crushing cost, we're not gonna sell it all necessarily, but um, a little bit here and there, um, seems like every week we haul out a few loads um, for farmers or whoever wants to buy it around here. Going over pretty well. A few can, projects we are currently working on or gonna work on this year are South Ash. Willow Glen Culvert Installation Repair, um, the culvert's in, you saw the bill for it. Um, and we're currently working on getting some concrete poured around the culvert and uh, it's a bit of a challenge with the water table in that area. There's water where we need to pour concrete, so um, tomorrow we have some concrete scheduled for ten o'clock, if you want to check it out. Um, new sidewalk on D from Cedar to Birch next to Memorial Ball Field, this has been uh, ever since I started here, getting that one put in, because the pool was put out there with no sidewalks to it, and so we did this uh, maybe a third of it a couple of years later, and then we did more recently, and this is kind of the last phase of getting the sidewalk all the way through the pool. And so it'll be nice, you see uh, young mothers with children pushing their strollers to the gravel of the fair, fairgrounds and it just it don't work so good, so this sidewalk will be a great improvement for the area. Uh, we also want to keep going with some road striping and crosswalk markings, and we've started that in the last year and we just need to continue with um, some more of that. Um, leveling of the red bricks downtown with the addition of irrigation for flower planters. Um, cleaning out of the muse, museum ex- excessive items, and we've helped with that some. Have an auction coming up for some of that, getting ready for the auction and building a splash pad and park area. As you're aware of, I'm sure. And I think the splash pad park will be a good project for us. I think we can all use the city, the city workers' talents to put this thing together, and then we'll end up with a good and long lasting product that the community can use and enjoy. Seems like I'm forever asking for equipment, you as a council may not hear some of these requests because they get filtered out because of money constraints usually between conversations between Matt and I, and that's just the chain of command, that's how it works, right? Um, I feel like we're always a little bit behind on replacing equipment. Oftentimes the equipment we trade in is of little value because of major faults or age. Um, we do have some really nice equipment too, we've got a loader, skip loader, skid loader. Um, you know, some other smaller things that are newer and very nice, um, so I appreciate that. Um, we do have a couple of talented guys, um, um mechanics on staff that we do a lot of our own repairs when we can. I think it saves a lot of money, although it does take away from production in the field too. So we, we try to balance that out with uh, repairs. Um, I've always said that we're a big enough city to justify having some of our own equipment to perform our own work. But we aren't big enough to have just all the right equipment or all the equipment we wish we could have. Um, you know, we're kind of a, somewhere in that, stuck in the middle. Which is all right, we, that's what we know and what's what we deal with. Um, we're very innovative and sometimes make our own equipment or adapt another piece of equipment to fit our needs, and we love a good challenge. Right now, we have a great need for a dump truck because we had an engine failure in one of our dump trucks, we also need to upgrade a pickup or two among other smaller items. Uh, the used excavator we talked about a few weeks ago, that I wanted to purchase is postponed because of the expense of the backhoe that we're buying in the back trailer. Um, and that's just the way it goes. I've not purchased anything enclosed job trailer we are looking for yet, I just haven't quite found the right one. I've been a little busy with other things, but we'll get that coming eventually. Um, and this sounds like a little bit of a crazy idea, but um, I've talked to some other communities and they, they've made it work on some equipment, but so uh, since we're a government, we get a government discount from dealers, we can buy at a discount, keep it for a certain number of hours or years, probably a couple of years, and trade it in or trade it or sell it for roughly what we paid for it, probably a little less, but um it might be a way for certain pieces of equipment to, we can keep up with newer pieces um, for those. And it's the difference between municipal pricing and then slightly used private market pricing. Um, our facilities are a bit cramped, we need more equipment storage. Um, we're currently using NPI for a lot of storage and as we know, that building is leaky and somewhat coming down on itself, but um, the street and sanitation department share a shop. Um, we do a lot of the trash truck maintenance too, um, when it comes to servicing repairs. Um, David does some and we, we do some with him also. Um, our offices are a little tight, we've talked about it in under our shop, but um haven't got too far on that, maybe that'll come up in the future also. Um, we as a street ma- street department service the burn site, we spend roughly a couple hours there. Um, it can be frustrating to manage this because violators dump trash lumber there, which is against K D H E rules. I do believe we'll have a nice, a nice all weather site to dump tree branches for the city, it's very well used. For everybody within the city. Our compost site is a very busy place also, that we manage, the site is busy with people dumping raw vegetation or taking compost and material back home. This is also all weather site that serves the community well, our finished compost is nearly gone because there's such demand for it. At times, it's, it's hard also to manage this site because of unwanted trash that's dropped off at the site. Um, seems like the street department wears quite a few hats. Uh, we sometimes are the labor pool for the city for any kind of projects, which we don't mind, that's how it is. I feel like we have a long road to hoe when it comes to straight work, but looking back through the years, we have accomplished a large number of product, projects. And I personally have seen the street landscape um, have many improvements for the better. We have a good crew, community with good people, I see a lot of good things happening around town. I remember in the not so distant past, crazy idea to use community volunteer labor to do, to lay bricks for two blocks of city streets. Looking back, wow, what a project. Um, seems like an unrealistic, but the uh, great volunteers that we had made it happen and it turned out very nice. Um, the brick project introduced one community member to another that hadn't met before and gave a sense of, I did that to the improvement of the street. Another improvement to our community recently has been the addition of the trail. This gives walkers a dedicated path, changes scenery and a way to get exercise. I hope we can continue to expand the trail and have a loop around the whole town connecting the sports complex, Hillsborough Heights and Joel Wayne Stadium. Sidewalks seem to connect the community to get together. There are many aspects of our city work that I could talk about, but I'll stop here. I would hope you as a council feel the freedom to talk with us about concerns you have. With any aspects of city maintenance, we would love to have these conversations, and we appreciate your willingness to hear our concerns and thank you for the opportunity to speak on the street department's behalf. Are there any questions or comments?
Hey, I was gonna say, it's ironic you brought up some of the issues, one of the things we're looking at for a um, cost approach, whatever else, if you, I don't know if you've heard of micro surfacing. Um, we're, that's one of the projects we're looking at. Um, we can get, we're, we're talking an average of sixty thousand dollars per mile for us. But we use that a lot in Wichita, Slina, things like that, it's obviously heavier than that seal course, but less expensive than the asphalt. So if we get that contractor here, we'll definitely let anybody know, so we So if we get that contractor here, we'll definitely let anybody know. So we could, if I can anything else, once, once we get the contractor here, we could do that.
Yeah, I think certain streets that work well where you have a good base and a decent street.
Yes.
Yeah, where some of our asphalt streets are just annihilated.
Yes.
But yeah, for the right road, it, it could be a good.
And, and we're facing the same thing as well. The other thing is, uh, actually was brought up at the commission meeting this Monday is we're, we're getting some new equipment. Um, and obviously I understand that's the price of those, but we're going to be selling our old stuff and technically we've gone to purple wave. Well, we actually were contacted by the city of Marion. Uh, we're going to get rid of our two motor grates. And so what we talked about was the commission basically decided is before we get rid of stuff on purple wave. We're going to contact the local, you know, the other towns, whatever else, to see if they're interested first. The benefit to that is if it doesn't go a purple wave, um, we, we'll set a price, I mean approximately what, whatever that negotiated price is. But if you don't go through purple wave, then the buyer does not have the 10% premium. So it saves you 10% as well as transportation costs. Um, so anyway, we just thought that would be a way to try to help, you know, other entities out as well. So, but anyway.
Thank you.
Tina is going to be reaching out to all the clerks.
Yeah.
So on that big.
We, one thing we're looking at now is we're getting ready to sell a CAT one twenty eight. It's one of our smaller units, but um. Decent shape and everything else. So like you said, Tina will be contacting all the, the clerks. Yeah, so. And Matt, did you get the cancel thing?
Yeah, I did. I found it in the filter and I sent it out. So caught in the basket, sorry.
Um, the other thing too is, you know, I appreciate what you guys try to do, but if there's something county we can help with, you know. We're, we're here to help everybody, so.
You have a question?
If we just had more money.
That's right.
And people.
Yeah, we take that.
All right. Well, keep up the good work. We do appreciate what you guys do. You're very valuable members of our city team.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a good report. Don't be strangers.
Thank you.
I just wanted to hear.
Hey, we're now into our business items section of the agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. Um, first item up is a temporary permit for alcohol sales for golf association at Scheffler House, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is a, just following up with what we presented at the March fifteenth meeting. Um, they've gotten everything worked out. You've got a copy of their. Permit that they've submitted to us, uh, just kind of following up on some of the information there. Beer garden is, is going to be fundraiser for the golf association and they are working with Three Rings Brewery, Adam McPherson on that. So. I think anybody who's familiar with that will be happy with that. Um, they do have a C and B license. We figured out the issue with uh insurance. They do have, they're covered under a city's liability insurance because the golf association is a named insured for us. Um, because they obviously run a lot of events on the golf course, which is our public property. Um, so we think we got that all worked out. Um. You know, the museum property is probably the most interesting piece of this because it's not technically one of the properties that we normally would allow alcohol. To be served on. And so if you're going to do this, you're also going to be granting them permission to do that. And it's going to be for that one day, June fifteenth. Um, they have kind of a plan as to where they're going to contain everything. And I, I, Dave Schrag from the golf association has been kind of working that. Been really nice to work with on this project. So I feel pretty, feel pretty comfortable that they're going to do it in, in an appropriate way. Um, I don't think bike across Kansas people are particularly rowdy group. So I don't think it's going to be a huge deal as far as how the neighborhood is going to uh react to that. They also have permission from the Lutheran church. That was an important piece. Um. The Lutheran church is actually going to be hosting the meal that night. So the community foundation is going to be preparing the meal in the Lutheran. Churches, uh fellowship hall and then serving out of there. So they're a hundred percent on board. Willing to, to actually help if necessary, so.
And this is not a public field, it's just for the bikers, correct?
Well, I theoretically, yeah, but I'm not real sure how you're going to keep people from the public out of that necessarily. So. Um, what we basically have asked for is them to show us how they're going to contain people. Um, I don't know that they can necessarily limit it to just the bikers participating or the staff or. There's a lot of unknowns there.
The only complaint I had with some people from town that how come we can't go?
Well. Hey, maybe you could. I mean, uh, that would be an option. I don't, there's not like a, a guest registration and a, a red velvet rope keeping people out.
It's kind of going to be, I mean, it's not there for people who don't drink or.
Right, yeah. It's not going to be a party.
Yeah, a party, yeah.
So if you're, uh, if you're willing to, to continue forward with this, you're comfortable with this, uh, your vote would be to grant them a temporary acts, uh, temporary sale and serve. Or service of alcohol permit to the golf association for June fifteenth. And then also it asks that you authorize it to be held at the Scheffler House since it's kind of an unusual location.
Any questions? Hearing none. Would somebody like to make that motion? The count, Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, ordinance thirteen forty six establishing pole attachment fees, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. This is a, obviously a, a fun. Piece of business here. Um, so we currently charge one dollar per pole. Um, and we actually have a little bit of trouble finding where that is in our code and our resolution. So. Uh, what we've done and where Andrew has developed here is an ordinance that establishes that pole attachment uh fee. And says that at ten dollars was what we discussed at the March first meeting. Uh, kind of the big thing there, I guess, is it's, it's kind of a minimal financial impact. I mean, it is an increase for. Vibe is our number one customer. As far as that goes, they have six hundred and sixty poles or excuse me, six hundred and thirty six poles. So. They all go from six hundred and thirty six dollars up to six thousand three hundred and sixty uh per year. So that's obviously a large increase, but. Um, when you look at kind of where we're at compared to everybody else, it's not that significant truthfully. So. Yeah, so i- if you're comfortable with this, then we're just uh recommending you approve the ordinance as, as presented.
Any questions? Hearing none. Would somebody care to make that motion to approve ordinance thirteen forty six establishing pole attachment fees and authorize the mayor to sign?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves, Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none will poll the council, Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman, uh, by.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved, ordinance uh thirteen forty six uh establishing pole attachment fees is approved by a vote two to one.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I don't need to interrupt. That's two, two to one with one member missing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't pass. An ordinance has to be passed by majority of the members elect, not those present. We have to have three yeses for the ordinance to pass.
Okay.
I'll trade my vote to you.
Okay.
I don't want to go on. I mean, I'm not in favor because I think they're going to raise prices, but it's fine. Let's do it, get it done. I'll change my vote.
So do we need to re?
Yeah.
We're going to repoll the council. Okay, Councilman Lowen, yes. Councilman McCarty.
Yes, respectfully.
Councilman by.
Yes.
Okay, we have a vote, uh, three, uh, I, which is a majority of the council. Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up. I'd hate to prove something and find out it wasn't really.
I didn't know that either. That's.
Now a simple voice vote.
On a resolution or a motion, it can be a majority of those present, but an ordinance must be majority of the total members, whether they are present or not.
I guess I should have read this book.
Yeah, there you go. They probably have it right.
Maybe.
Might have.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman McCarty. Appreciate it. Uh, we now have uh item three, which is auction items, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So Dale had mentioned in his report about the auction and we've talked about it several different times here at the council level. Uh, so what we wanted to do is give you a list of everything and I, I updated that and revised it and sent it out to you because we had that. The counts weren't on there for the museum stuff and they actually ended up being a little bit more that came in from museum stuff. Uh, we're looking at one of the last two weekends in April, but I'm having a hard time getting a whole lab key to give me the firm date. Um, so this is kind of the list of the things that we would like to do at the live auctions. You've got kind of a, a, just a laundry list of everything we've got. Everything from hand tools to. We've got taxidermy birds, which is fun. Uh, we, we seem to be finding a lot of taxidermy animals at the museum. I'm not sure. Where they came from and we can't find ascension records that show us where they came from in all cases. Uh, so it's, you know, some, some interesting stuff. Uh, and then we've got, you know, the island of misfit toys of technology from the administration department, just sort of things that we've collected over the years we need to get rid of. So. Um, we're just asking that you take a look at that and if there's anything in there that you feel like we shouldn't necessarily sell, we would uh pull that out. Uh, we also have some of our larger equipment that we're going to be moving forward to purple wave and you'll get a look at that once we get to that point. Pretty well close on that, but. So we're just seeking approval of uh, of our proposed auction items if that's something that you feel comfortable with.
It's just, is this going to be a problem for anybody that donated stuff, some of this stuff?
So what we've done is we've gone back. If we have records on it, we've tried to contact the people who donated it or the family. Uh, a lot of cases we can find family members. Um, and we've asked them if they want it back or what we should do with it. And if they've given it, if they don't want it back and they say it's fine to, to get rid of it, then we put it on the auction book. Uh, a lot of times there, there's some of these things we can't find if we don't have records for. Uh, you know, there was a, a pretty significant amount of time where the, uh, where wasn't a museum director and we just kind of took things. Um, and so they weren't documented real well, so.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff really doesn't have anything to do with the Adobe House.
No. Well, and if you look at like uh tea kettles, for example, we have ten tea kettles.
Yeah.
We kept probably half a dozen tea kettles, so this is.
They were British.
Extra. Yep, they could have been British tea kettles, who knows? So, uh, and then there's just some things that we've acquired, like the hospital sterilizer. Really doesn't have any. Historical value. It's something we've acquired.
I didn't realize that many stuffed birds or.
Yeah.
Natural history here.
Yeah, we're kind of turning to that too.
Any questions? Any concerns? Would the council prefer to go to, uh, go through all these items line by line?
I read them.
Okay, good.
I read them too.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, because I wanted to see if there's something I might want.
That's what I did too.
Come to the auction.
The men working sign would be perfect for our dealership.
So.
Working, actually.
Women working too there.
Yeah.
People working.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the list of items as submitted for the auction.
So move.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Okay, we now move on to ARPA funding, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've gotten the final rule from the Treasury Department regarding the ARPA funding and uh they've made things a lot simpler. I think mostly for their own benefit because they gave money to pretty much every jurisdiction. Uh, and so that, what they've done is created something called standard allowance, uh, which is a ten million dollar cap. Um, and if you do that, you basically can use uh the ARPA money for your standard operating governmental purposes is essentially what it is. The only real caveat in that that we have found is that uh you can't really purchase any equipment over five thousand dollars or it becomes property of the federal government. Um, and so I don't think you really want to get into that particular situation. Um, but one of the big bonuses for us with the standard allowance is that the, the record keeping or the reporting, I guess I should say, record keeping is the same essentially, but. Uh, the reporting goes down to a very simplified version of what they had before, um, for what they were going to have for us. So. Uh, what I would recommend doing, um, if, if you're wanting to, to use this money, we can obviously use it for the same purposes we've talked about before. Uh, but I would think that moving this into our capital improvements fund uh would be a good use for this money. Um, and so that we could do different projects with it. And we've talked about the demolition of one twenty eight South Main, for example, using that as best some of the funding for that. Um, we're actually going to get four hundred and twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and forty seven dollars and thirty eight cents. Uh, right now we just have the first half of that. The second half should come in June. You know, so I, I think the best use of that would be for the capital improvement fund. You don't, I don't really feel like it's a great idea to put it into the operational side of things. Uh, you, you run into some situations where that, that's a one time cash infusion. So you don't want to make commitments against that that are going to be ongoing. So just some, some food for thought. We had the, the new standard or the new standard allowance thing came out, I think after, well, just, just before our last meeting. And so we've just had some time to digest that now. So if that's a direction you'd want to go, uh, we would. Look for some kind of guidance from you on that. There is no. No need to act right now if you don't want to either. If you want to think about it some more, uh, we have until I think twenty twenty four to spend all of the money. So. That is, that is an option as well, but. We're recommending from a staff perspective, moving it into the capital improvement fund.
If the council were to take action, what would that action be?
Uh, well, we would want to direct those funds um used for revenue replacement under the standard allowance as stated in the Treasury Department's final rules for the American Rescue Plan Act. Which is a mouthful, but I think it's important that we note it's under the final rules and we're using the standard allowance.
Council, what's your preference?
Whatever you said.
So is that a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Is there a way you got that written down?
Um, yes, it's just as stated on the recommendation in there. It says. Um, motion to direct the funds to be used for revenue replacement under the standard allowance as stated in the Treasury Department's final rules for the American Rescue Plan Act. So this does not reflect the capital improvement. This only reflects that it will be for revenue replacement. At this time.
You did a good job.
I had to remember, but I.
Hey, we have a motion in a second or.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Second was Councilman Lowen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action this day. Now this might be timely, uh, since the meeting's going. All right along, but uh the public uh community plaza bathroom proposal, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so as we talked about, and we're, Dale actually brought this up to you, the community plaza project. So. Um, our city crews are going to be doing the installation of spray park stuff. Uh, well, the spray park itself, I guess you should say, stuff. Uh, we have purchased that using funds that, that has been, have been raised privately. And then we'll use the remainder of the funds to work on the site, install the. The equipment and do the concrete work. Uh, we have about seventy thousand left there. I think that. Should be fairly close to what it's going to cost, but I'm not a hundred percent sure at this point yet. Um, we're still kind of working on that. Uh, but one of the things in there that we, we need to look at doing also is the. Uh, bathroom project. And so we've been out looking for restroom proposals for this. Um, what we've got back, you've got a copy of there. It's a block building. Uh. It's got HVAC for year round operation. The intent is to make this thing as durable, low maintenance as possible because we don't want to mess with that. Um, so the cost estimate that we got back was a hundred and fifty three thousand.
I found that online. I think that's approximately.
Pretty similar. Pretty similar type of construction, yeah. Um, a hundred and fifty three thousand, two eighty one. Um. So if you want to, you know, normally we kind of two step this, but if we're interested in, in going forward this, if you wanted to use, for example, ARPA money to do this, that would be in the capital improvement fund. Um, and I think would be an acceptable use for that. If we're going to move forward, the lead time on the HVAC is eight to ten weeks already. So. Uh, if we were going to build it yet this year, we would want to look at doing that, at least ordering that part right now. So, uh, if we were gonna build it yet this year, we would want to look at doing that, at least ordering that part right now. So that would be, we'd be basically taking on that part of the project as the city. Um, we do have a donor who is interested in helping with this project. I talked to him this morning a little bit. Um, you know, I think it kind of depends on what the, it depends on what happens with the, the council choosing. Uh, if they want to do the, fund the bathrooms, particularly, uh, with, with ARPA money in this case. I think they're, they're interested in doing kind of a challenge grant thing, uh, where they would put up some money and challenge the community to raise their additional, the same amount. Uh, and so obviously that takes time, uh, if that's something that they want to, to do. So, uh, you know, that's where that particular piece of it is. Um, so if, you know, if it's something that we want to continue doing and we want to do this this summer, uh, which I think it would be a great addition to the, to the park, you need the spray park, the spray park really needs a bathroom. This is really the time to, to make a move on it. So, uh, if you're wanting to, to move forward and completing that initial phase, the community plaza, that's a priority for this group and we're gonna, I would recommend moving forward installation of the bathroom facility. There's a lot of changing prices, things moving really quickly. So, uh, what could cost us 153,000 today, it could be more tomorrow. So, um, you know, that's, that's just what it is. And I, you know, if, if that's the way you want to proceed, then I'd recommend, you know, approving them not to exceed amount. Uh, I know 190,000 sounds insane when it's 153,000, but I really don't know what we're looking at construction wise.
When might that be finished, does that get approved?
Yeah, if, if it was to get approved, I think we'd have it in, in the middle of the summer. Bathroom part, yeah.
The spray park's gonna go ahead.
It's gonna be, it's moving forward now. So, you know, we're working on that, we cut down trees the other day. So, you know, that process is, is going and, you know, we're hoping to get that done by early summer.
That would be a big asset for what's coming up.
Yeah. Yeah, and the idea of having it be year-round is that we'd use it for things like the, uh, Arts and Crafts Fair, where we always need more restaurants. Yeah, so it'd be a nice piece. And then if you look at the, the plan that I submitted in there, this is the site plan. On the, what would be the north side, which would be the right-hand side of this print, uh, we've got a stage in there is, is kind of the last phase of that project. Um, so it's kind of a natural amphitheater and it would be, uh, you'd have, you know, outdoor, we, we kind of called it an outdoor classroom type thing where we can do, you know, different types of educational things. We could also do entertainment concerts. Uh, we've talked about having a big screen in there so that we could show sporting events, taper sporting events, high school sporting events, stream that stuff and have kind of watch parties. So, uh, it's, it's a really cool project and, uh, you know, I think it's a worthy thing. We've got it in our strategic plan to, to get it finished and wrapped up. Um, and so now that we've, we've, we've got potentially some money there from the ARPA money that we weren't necessarily expecting, uh, I think that would be a good candidate to move this thing forward.
Pretty neat for us.
Well, the recommendation is to, uh, to approve the bathroom project with a not to exceed amount of $190,000. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? We have councilman by seconding the motion. Is there any further con- conversation or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and that's with much appreciation on my part. Um, this is a project that's been near and dear to my heart for a long time. And, and, uh, we've been working on this thing for many years. And, uh, it's, it's exciting to see that we're getting this close to actually making it a reality. And, uh, you know, I think, as I think about the progression of this, you know, that challenge grant and some of that other stuff could help us fund those final phases of it. And that would be very, I think, very appropriate for the stage and screen and some of those kind of things, so.
It'd be a benefit to the city, that's why I'd like to project.
Yeah, I think it'll be a really, a, a nice gathering point downtown, bring a lot more people.
Okay, thank you very much. Now moving on to, uh, uh, item six, which is planning commission recommendation on alternative construction, housing, zoning overlay. Mr. Styles?
Okay, thank you, sir. So the planning commission has been working pretty diligently since we put that 60-day moratorium on shipping container homes. Um, and so what we've, we've kind of worked out, uh, was to have at the March 31 planning commission, meaning they finalized a recommendation for what's called an alternative construction house, housing zoning overlay. Uh, so not to get too deep in the weeds as to what that is, but it basically means that you can, uh, apply for this, put it over the top of an existing residential place. And then, uh, different rules apply if you're gonna do different types of construction. So it's not just shipping containers, but it would also be, uh, barn dominiums, you know, taking a pole shed and turning it into a house. Um, using, uh, straw bales as, as a construction material, which is a popular thing to do. Uh, all, you know, geodesic domes, you name it, it could potentially be an alternative housing. Um, but this gives us a, a method to, to review all of that before it goes in. Um, if it's something that's, it's unusual or alternative as defined by the code, uh, then it would have to fall into this A, AH district. Um, so we, we had a meeting when you, I, I put the link into the meeting so you could actually watch the video. Uh, so it, you know, what to, what we would have to do and what the planning commission's already started is to set a public hearing, uh, for hearing this zoning overlay, uh, which there's a notification piece. It works exactly like you would do any other kind of, uh, notifications for zoning change. Uh, so in order to do that, they've got their set of planning, a planning commission has set a public hearing for the end of April. And we'll have a notification period in there, uh, 20, 20 days and you have to publish the newspaper. Uh, and so they're gonna have a public hearing for that and then make a, a recommendation to the council for action. And so what, what we need from you guys or what, what the recommendation, I guess, from the council is, is to consider extending the moratorium until the process is completed. Uh, there's a little bit of a, a process here in order to make a zoning regulation change like this. Um, so that's, that's what the planning commission is formally requesting is that the moratorium stay in place until the issue can be settled, which would require more time to do it.
So do they, do they know about how long the moratorium would need to stay in effect?
Yeah, if, if everything went according to the calendar, uh, you would have this in front of you on May 2nd.
So the motion would need to be that we would extend the moratorium until May 2nd?
I would extend it until you get a, a recommendation from some planning commission in case something doesn't go right with the publication or, you know, a public hearing doesn't.
Leave it a little open-ended.
Give it a little open-ended so we can actually do it.
I think that, uh, it would be also fair to, if you haven't, if you didn't watch the meeting, which I did. Um, I think the, uh, in, in this case, the developer, the potential developer, I don't know that the property's been closed on yet, but, uh, it continues to be, uh, we continue to be told that it's in the, in the process of sale, but it hasn't closed yet. But that individual is, is, uh, expressed frustration with the process that it was taking so long and et cetera, et cetera. But the, um, the planning commission member said, well, would you rather have us do it right or not do it at all?
Well, I agree with the planning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I just, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware, you know, that there is, there was a little bit of pushback from the, uh, potential developer, not saying that that needs to, needs to sway your, sway your, uh, decision or your deliberations at all.
Well, I think the, uh, the planning commission was at, uh, like some places.
Okay.
The only reason I asked that was cuz it didn't have a date in here, so I just assumed that it was open-ended.
Yeah, be a little bit open-ended there. I mean, the anticipation of everything goes correctly in May 2nd. Um, the important thing to note, because Felix did, uh, Mr. Ramirez did note his frustration and he called me before the meeting and to note it again. Um, the thing with this is if you put this in place before you can get a building permit, you would have to go through the new zoning process that would be happening, that would be attached here. Um, so, you know, under that scenario, I think it, you know, everything could be complete in early August for him to actually break ground and do something. So, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a delay longer if.
I hope he understands what we're doing.
Well, I think so. And I, I think as the mayor said at the planning commission, they were pretty clear, like, you know, the options were to ban this outright or to go through the process correctly. So, um, you know, it's kind of a take it or leave it scenario for him.
Is that what you're supposed to look like or you sent some pictures of all?
Yeah, this was what was presented at the meeting or what Mr. Ramirez brought to the meeting. So there's a 3D rendering of what one of the, uh, container homes would look like. Uh, there's actually two sides of that. And then there's a four, uh, floor, or plan, excuse me, four one. Um, so you can kind of see what that looks like too. Uh, was the square footage on here, it should be on here somewhere. What's 600, 640 square feet, I think is what it was.
I actually looked at that in the picture. It kinda looks better than the ones that are sitting on blocks. I mean, well, I mean, you gotta consider that cuz the people down there aren't real happy about.
Sure.
Having something on blocks up there and I can't say, it just doesn't look too bad.
So, uh, just to recap, uh, if I could, the recommendation by staff is that, uh, they recommend that we extend the council, extends the moratorium until the proposed A-H overlay district process can be completed. That would be the motion. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman McCarty, is there a second? Councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, we now have a, uh, item seven, Ford invoices totaling $3,121.9. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So we've just got a handful of, uh, replacement things here and, and work that's been done by Ford. Uh, you've got all the, the list there of kind of where all that stuff comes from. Uh, police, fires, sewer, sports complex, a little bit of everything this time. So, uh, total is $3,121.9.
Would somebody care to make a motion to approve? Councilman McCarty, Councilman Lowen seconds. Got that, Daniel? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
Uh, motion carries. Okay, now item eight, and, and I'm sorry, we've had such a long agenda, Mr. Smith, but, uh, we've got kind of a convoluted thing we need to fix or straighten out or, I don't know what the appropriate terminology is, but I'm gonna let you walk us through it, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we approved it at, at our land bank meeting on the 15th to sell, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, a lot, four block four. Uh, we sent it over to the paper or to the title company, they did their review, which is what we pay them to do. And it turns out that that property wasn't included into the land bank. And so the land bank actually doesn't have the authority to sell it. The thinking, I believe, is that a previous city attorney had, had left it out because Mr. Smith had an option to purchase it previously. And so it probably had just left that out of, of the land bank transaction because they thought that that would potentially happen. So, um, so there's three things that need to happen to fix this. Uh, first, the city council acting as the city council, uh, would need to approve the proposed land bank sale, uh, purchase here, uh, from to Mr. Smith. The terms are the exact same as you did at the lay-in as the land bank. So the city council will approve that. And then, then the council would have to move into the land bank meeting, act as the land bank board, uh, and terminate the existing agreement with Mr. Smith because we can't legally do it. Um, and then we would also want to go in and act as land bank and approve the option agreement, uh, for lot five, block four, which is what we intended to do previously. Uh, so we have to kind of clear this whole thing up. So, uh, those are, those are the things we need to do. So we're recommending right now for this action is for the city to approve this purchase contract with Mr. Smith for, um, lot, uh, lot four, block four, Philadelhi Heights.
Let's move.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we are gonna move into a land bank meeting and Mr. Styles, what action do we need to take as a land bank?
Uh, you need to approve your minutes first.
Okay, everybody received copies of the minutes? Any questions? Corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes for approval.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved, next.
We need to approve the agreement to terminate the real estate purchase agreement.
Hey, would somebody care to make that motion?
Oh.
Councilman McCarty moves. So councilman by seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we need to approve the option agreement.
Okay. And before we do this, Mr. Smith, are you comfortable with everything we're doing to kind of correct the situation?
I am.
Again, with our apologies for, uh, for the delay. Okay, so would somebody care to make the final motion?
I will.
Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now move into, uh, back into city council. Thank you very much. And again, apologies. But, you know, we're gonna get it straightened out and get you on your, on your way. Okay, next item is, uh, uh, your city administrator's report, Mr. Styles.
A couple of things, wanted to just mention the community garden is really starting to take off. I don't know if you've had a chance to go over there, but the kids are, uh, fast, fast planting things. And, uh, we got some signs coming in and, uh, city crews have done a great job of getting that prepped and ready to go. And there's a lot of excitement there, so it's a, it's a cool project. They're happy to have that moving forward and I'm really excited to see what the fifth graders do with that. Um, it's at the museum property between the visitor center and the basketball courts. Um, what's that?
I've been seeing them work over there.
Oh, yeah, they've been busy. They, they know how to work, which is great.
The garden club?
Yep, the garden club, they're here, ready to do it. Task grant, which is the one we applied for through tourism for the museum projects, we did not get that, um, unfortunately. But the Bartle House has enough money raised for that project and we're meeting with a major donor on that in, uh, Monday. Uh, so that one's gonna move forward anyway. We were just hoping to be able to use some grant money to help with that project. We didn't win that one, so that's unfortunate. Uh, the base grant, which is the fire station grant, that has not been, uh, announced yet. The, uh, Department of Commerce had, had indicated that, uh, they would be making announcements in March, uh, and they, they gave themselves an extension, uh, to review all those grants, even though they gave nobody an extension to submit them. That's kind of how that went, right? Yeah, so we hope to hear that actually here fairly quickly, maybe this, this week even, uh, potentially. So, uh, I had a meeting with Corps of Engineers and the water office, went really well. Uh, March 18th, we were out at the dam, uh, out at the reservoir facility and, and took a look around there. Uh, we're gonna continue working with KDH, I think we can get a hundred percent loan forgiveness for emerging contaminants to do some, some work on our incoming water from the reservoir to handle the iron and manganese and also the algae, algae issue. So, uh, liability insurance, we've, we've got our renewal, uh, with EMC, they're kind of finalizing some of that. So a couple of things we added to the policies, the large water tower for a reason wasn't in there. Um, it is now, and so we're ensuring that. And then also we added, uh, enhanced cybersecurity insurance coverage. It wasn't very expensive and that's the one that makes me the most nervous right now. Um, and so we did that. Total proposed amount is 155,457, that might change a little bit slightly. Um, that's about a 13%, 13 and a half percent increase from last year, but that has to do with, uh, EMC increasing all property insurance by about 13 and a half percent. So really, from that perspective, we, all the changes we made kind of kept us pretty well flat and we just kind of got what we, what we would normally see. Um, and we're also in the process of getting one, a quote again from Midwest Public Risk, so you'll see that coming up here shortly as well. Uh, health insurance renewal's coming up, we'll have that in the next few months. We're looking at potentially being in the K-Met health insurance pool. It's a new thing, K-Met's been working on. Um, if that makes sense for us, we'll be looking at those rates too. And then you've got the financial report there, uh, we've got the financial report through February, end of February. Uh, and we're, we're working on getting March, uh, tied up for you. Uh, and then the sales tracks, sales tax tracking charts there actually continued to do pretty well. We're about 20% above last year, uh, and 30% above the rolling average for five years. So everything continues to keep moving on that in a positive direction, very happy about that. uh and thirty percent above the rolling average for five years, so everything continues to keep moving on that in a positive direction, very happy about that. Uh, last thing is the demolition of one twenty eight South Main, they were saying originally it'd be finished the middle of half of April, it looks like now it's gonna be first part of May, so a little bit of delay there, but.
That's due to the remediation.
Remediation part, yeah. So, we're still moving forward. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions? All right, now we're on our final public comment section, uh is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? We have uh, looks like one member, Rod Funk online. Um, everybody in here looks to be in good shape. All right. Now move on to council comments, Councilman By. Councilman McCarty.
The other day I had a couple of people talk to me, and they thanked the city for the trail. They said they would really be happy if it was extended some, and like Dale was talking about, and also on the loop, they said everybody that talked really thought that was a really good deal for him.
It's used.
Yeah, it's used a lot.
Yeah. Okay, Councilman Lowen?
No comments.
Okay. All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the city council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's participation.